Okay, good morning. We'll call to order the regular scheduled Board of Supervisors meeting on this Tuesday morning, May 10th. And first item on our agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance, but I'd ask, as everybody stands, let's take just a moment. Remember our break? Pledge of Allegiance.
To the God of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first item on our agenda is reorganization of the Board due to vacancies.
Mr. Sanders, I would move that you move to Chair of the Board and I will serve as Vice Chair for the remaining of the year.
Second, discussion.
As you know, you were already Vice Chair and have done a good job over the last several years. I personally have chaired the Board of Supervisors numerous times in my tenure and I have come to fully respect the leadership ability of both you and Lieutenant Mr. Toot for the work that you guys have done. And as you know, what my intentions are to step down at the end of this calendar year. I would like to, I know that you will provide the same quality of leadership that you have shown up to this point in your, was it six years you've been in your six year now?
Six years.
Six years of service to Story County, so I would be honored just to continue to see us continue to find example that we've already established.
Thank you, one. Clint?
Aye.
Sanders, aye. Or shall I do anything other than that? Is that fair?
Do you want to go ahead and explain?
I think you did.
That was an emotion.
Do you need to separate motion?
And at later time, what we will be doing is looking at assignments and so forth and figuring out who's going to cover some of those assignments that Paul chaired and so forth. So that'll come through notification to the various boards and so forth.
All right, next item is public comment number one. This is an opportunity for members of the public to address items on today's agenda. I've got several people wishing to speak, coupled to the confinement and one to the research part. If it's okay with all of you, you're welcome to speak now. If it's okay with all of you, I'd have you speak while we're addressing the issue. Arden, are you okay with that?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, a quick question. Did we decide to delay the conversation from Lucy on the discussion of the vacancy timeline? That's listed on the agenda, right before our public comment.
I'm different, okay. So let's go back to that. Well, let's do a public comment because I don't think we're going to have anybody right now. Brenda and Ron and Deb, are you guys good withholding your comments until we get to that point? Okay, so next item is a report. I saw all three, our Treasurer, Honor and Reporter are all here. Report from them as they move through the process to determine how to fill our vacancies.
Make sure you introduce yourself, just in case we don't know.
Casey, you want to pull that chair? Just pull that chair over next to Lucy.
I'm Lucy Martin. I'm the Honor. I have with me today our Treasurer and Stacy Herich, the Reporter, and it is our sad duty to be the committee to consider how to fill the vacancy of the Board of Supervisors. Because we're not a group that meets on a regular basis, we do have, and we want to make sure that all of this occurs in the public sphere, at a public meeting, and should be as transparent as possible. We did look at our calendars yesterday and decide that we shall meet on Tuesday, May 17th at 9:00 a.m. That will be in this room. And that is to determine whether we will choose to appoint a successor or to call for a special election. That's, it's a procedural meeting only. Once we decide on which option to take, then we will discuss further into the meeting all the logistics that would be involved in either appointment or special election. I do have some dates for you. We did send out a press release yesterday. I saw that it was picked up at the 6th of the interview. Notice of public meeting to go and make free official newspapers on this Thursday, May So if we opt for an appointment, that is 40 day, we have 40 days to do that following the occurrence of the vacancy. So if we go for that option, that appointment has to take place no later than June 14th. That would be the 40 day. If we opt for a special election, and that's if we opt for it or not, if we get petition for something later, because of the blackout dates associated with the primary election, the earliest practical date that I can hold that election would be July 12th. So that's, again, if that's an option that we take.
And Lucy, help me with what the code says. You guys can choose to appoint or choose to have a special election. The people of Story County can always force a special election by gathering enough signatures.
Right. If we opt for the appointment and we make an appointment, then within 14 days from the appointment, we can, the public petition for a special election, that does require 10% of, yeah, 3,322 signatures would be on that petition, and that would come to my office. If we do, and there's a lot of questions up here, I know we've all been fielding them. If we do choose to appoint a successor, then because it's a vacancy filled by an appointment, that seat would go on the November 8th general election as Board of Supervisors seek to fill a vacancy. That will be for the residue of the term. That will be a separate plan item. Then Wayne seek, which is also going to be up, which is a four-year term, so it will be a separate line, separate box of the ballot that says Board of Supervisors to fill a vacancy. And so some people had some questions for me, like, does this reset the terms and things like that? No. Then the Board of Supervisors race has not become a code for two. It's a separate issue. If that happens, then under that scenario and under that what-if, then because it's a partisan race, the two parties could convene a special convention to nominate a candidate to go on that vacancy seat, and that would be under the same filing guidelines that dictate the general election, and that's an August 31st deadline. And also, nonpartisan candidates could do a petition, 250 signatures to go on as well. They could do that for any county race, so. I just don't want people to confuse what's already on the ballot with what may be on the ballot.
Right. So what anybody interested should be looking at right now, though, is the May 17th, 9:00 a.m. meeting where you guys will determine what process you're going to use to go forward.
Yeah, and I just want to be really clear, we're not appointing anybody at that meeting. It's not a forum for people to stand up and say, "I want to do this." It's merely for us to decide which option we're going to choose, which is, and if anyone wants to read the code, 69.14A, which some of you in the audience may not even know. In addition to looking at our calendars, we also consulted with Jessica Mowles, our First County Attorney, Deputy County Attorney. Is this the Deputy Attorney? I'm sorry.
Assistant. First Assistant.
Yeah, and so that our reading of the code matches. And I didn't know if you had further questions for us, I'm sure.
No, I just think the important thing is just to get the notification out to the public so that any interested parties understood the process and so forth. You know, we get a lot of questions and sometimes I think it's best that, you know, we have a consistent message that goes out that kind of explains how everything will fall in place, and that's why, we thank you so much for what you're sharing with us today.
Any inquiries that we do get, we are keeping in a folder in the Reporter's Office, just that is public record. So I've also requested if people have an opinion about appointment versus election, if they, any of the three of us, sometimes people can't come to a public meeting, sometimes they don't feel comfortable, but we will share all any comments received.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Agency reports, Salvation Army. Carrie McParton is here.
Good morning.
I hear.
Thank you for having me. I am here to give about a six-month report. It's a little longer. I'll be quick. I've sent you actually the report, so you have that in front of you. What I want to touch on, though, first of all, is thank you for the support, the financial support. You're supporting two programs that we offer. One is a bill care program for seniors. We have volunteers that we utilize from our SCP who go into the homes of seniors to help them make sure their bills are paid, their financial matters and record keeping are in order, to help them stay in their home a little bit longer. It helps with that long-term managed care, and so we'd like to avoid that and keep them in their homes. We have free volunteers. We also have one that actually monitors the checkbooks to make sure things are in order. It's just an added security. We have volunteer hours of 159 over the past year, so that's a good thing. The people are genuinely concerned about the people that they work with and the job that they're doing. There's staff hours in that. I didn't track that, my apologies. I didn't write it down. If that's something you're interested in, I can get that information to you. But we really appreciate the support of that program. It's important to keep seniors in their environments as long as possible. And then the other service that you fund for us is our emergency disaster services. Fortunately, I can report there has not been a disaster in this report period. What we have used those funds for, though, is an event that we partnered with the Story County Coalition of Disaster Services. We work closely with the Story County Disaster Management and a lot of different agencies like the Red Cross, our SCP, and several others. And we held an event called Spring Fury on April 30th, and that was a community education opportunity for people to come, talk to storm chasers from Channel 8 and meteorologists, and go around and get information on how to be prepared for disasters. And the focus is on children and also adults with disabilities. I don't have a final count on how many attended, though that information I'm certain will get to you at some point through your county agency part of that. Other services that we offer, we have food pantry. We served 1,084 families last year, or during this report time. That affected 2,761 individuals in Story County, so it's a significant number of people we've helped keep, you know, out of hunger. And we also do emergency rent mortgage and lodging assistance and utilities as well. We've helped 50 families in that time period, though the next couple months we'll be serving a lot more. And we have a representative P E program where we assist people with their social security incomes, where we manage those funds. And currently, we have 48 individuals or families that we're serving, but 44 of those are Story County residents. I wanted to also talk about Christmas. Last year, we served, we provided 245 food carts for Christmas. That was over $10,000, or the Salvation Army dollars that assisted 187 families and 496 children. We handed out a lot of toys that ended up being five or six toys per child, and those weren't large toys, but they were small ones. Those families probably would not have been able to offer, had it not been for the support of people all over Story County. We partner with Toys for Tots and Marines, and it's a really nice partnership we have with them. I guess one other thing I wanted to mention, too, is that we have a thrift store in Ames, and we're actually in two different silos. They sort of run on their own and our vision runs on their own, but we do mix a little bit in that we do refer people and give vouchers to people who are in crisis, who need clothes or furniture, and we refer them to the thrift store. The monies that are earned through that thrift store actually support the adult rehabilitation centers, and those are free alcohol and drug services that are inpatient. And we have one of those centers in Des Moines, so I'm looking to let you know about it. Do you have any questions?
No questions, but thank you very much. We appreciate the Salvation Army.
Yes, thank you so much.
Joe Quaker is out sick today, so no IRBM report. Consideration of minutes from April 26th and May 3rd.
Will approval for April 26th and May 3rd?
Any additions, corrections, or changes? I guess I'll second. Clint?
Aye.
Sanders, aye. Minutes passed. Consideration of personnel actions as listed.
Will approval as listed?
And I'll second. Clint?
Aye.
Sanders, aye. Consent agenda. Wayne, please add road closures 1658, 1659, 1660, and 1661, and utility permits, please add 1663 through 1668.
Will approval with noted changes?
Second, Clint?
Aye.
Sanders, aye. Consent agenda passes. Public hearing items. First public hearing item is consideration of a feeding, operation, construction permit application of Master Matrix for Happy Hula Farms, hog confinement expansion located in the northwest, one quarter southeast, one quarter section, 34 Lincoln Township. Margaret. Good morning, Margaret.
Good morning.
Aye.
Miss Paul Bann here. My gosh, he's always helpful on these matters. He's with us in spirit.
Margaret, how about starting by, and if you have this as part of the presentation, this is the first time we've used a new process to look at this.
Yes, and I reviewed that in one of the slides. So, good morning.
Good morning.
So our Master Matrix scoring, every year, Story County adopts a construction evaluation resolution relating to confinement feeding operation structures, allowing us to review the application using the Master Matrix, and how we shall not score criteria on a selective basis. So this enables Story County to add things that improve the protection of the environment to the permit. So this time, we use the new team approach. Instead of the environmental health doing the entire review, the Board of Supervisor and Supervisors passed a resolution requiring a team approach on review. So the Environmental Health is the committee chair and the lead department, and then we also include the directors from Planning and Development, Conservation, Engineering, Emergency Management, Assessor, Planning and Zoning Commission, and we have counsel from the attorney. Happy Hula Farms is the applicant, and, I apologize, let me go back here a minute. Happy Hula Farms is the applicant, the name of the farm, and the applicant is Noel LeMery Exera, if I'm pronouncing that right. Well, sorry. So they currently have one large confinement building that houses 2,480 mark butts. They're doubling that size for a total of about 5,000 mark butts. Multiplying that by a factor of .4, so that you compare all animal size-wise, you come up with an animal unit capacity of 1,894, and that puts them into the Master Matrix review category. The proposed site is about two miles south of Zering, seven miles north of Polo. It's located on 160th Street. We posted a sign in front of the site so that people can identify it as they drive by. This is taken from the application, and so the proposal shows the existing building, and that green shape is the proposal, and then it also shows the truck turnaround, and the bell is also shown on this slide. Sort of points of interest, the closest house is 1,900 feet, closest well is 100 feet, and that is their well that they own, and then it's about 2,000 feet to the nearest Okay, so the Master Matrix is a list of questions. The applicant chooses the ones they want to be considered for, for points. So questions 1 through 25 cover the site characteristics. So the first, so 2 through 10 are basically all distances to things like sinkholes, roads, streams, public use areas, and we agreed with all of their requests for points. And then number 12, liquid manure covered, with the building being on top of a pit, is automatically covered. Four manures, concrete, truck turnarounds, they do have that. Admin orders, I contacted DNR Legal, and there are no admin orders on the books in the last five years, ever actually. Facility size, they get 20 points for that because they're not above the maximum for that point category. And they do use what extension recommends, the wet drive areas. So we agree with all the points, with the exception of number 23, the family farm tax, and the assessor advised me on this to give them zero points because they do not have more than 10 acres, and therefore they do not qualify for that farm tax. If they are related to the family where they are applying the manure in that, then they would qualify, zones that was contiguous, but they're not related, so those are zero points on that one. So pitiful withdrew this point request and came up with some other conditions to get those points. Question 26 through 44, this is the second group, they cover the proposed operations and the manure management. So farms this size obviously need to submit a manure management plan, and then they update it annually. Matt Corey of our office did the map on this, so the pink stripes, that shows where the manure will be applied, and then the site itself, the confinement, is within that middle pinked area. It's very close, which is because there's less time traveled on the road with the manures first, so that's a nice feature in this plan. So there are only five considerations on the operations and manure management. So manure incorporation, they got 30 points, and that's an important one to have on the permit because it's same-day injection or knifing it in, and so to me, that means also that they will not be doing frozen applications. That's when you really get a lot of water pollution, is when it flows into the streams because it's not absorbed in the soil. So they got the 30 points for that. Distance to wells, really the only active one that's in the real mix of things is the well that they own on-site, and we'll make sure that they keep the 50-foot setback from that to get those 10 points. Distance to high-quality waters, the closest one in Story County is the Snook River, north of Ames, so they get the setback for that. They originally submitted an emergency action plan, emergency management, they do that, and they thought that it was not detailed enough, so we gave them zero points for that. And then the closure plan, five points. And closure means when it's all said and done, it'll all be pumped out and won't say a thing. That's what their plan is for closure, and following all the rules that are in effect at that time. And then, so the one that we awarded zero points for was plants too big and pitiful withdrew this point request as well. Final score, 440, and we agree with that point of evaluation. Public input, very minimal this time compared to most. One phone call and one walk-in, both against the expansion because of the odor, mostly during manure application time. That ends this presentation, so now the Board will have to, they can, they'll have to recommend to the DNR if they support this proposal or they do not support this proposal, and it should include all the specific reasons and supportive documentation for the decision to recommend approval of this application. So the comments that people made here today, that will be reported and sent down to the Department when they consider this application.
Margaret, before we open the public hearing and so forth, a couple of points that came up. You talked about the application process under 26 to 44, manure management and the 19a and same-day application, but the comment was is that they would not be doing anything to enclose the territory. What plans are in place to monitor whether that takes place or not?
That's a tough thing to monitor, very tough thing to monitor, without driving around the county 24/7, to be perfectly honest. We assume that they are stewards of the land and will not be doing that, and that's what we hope. I mean, certainly we do drive around and if we see something that we're uncomfortable about, we call DNR, and then they do the enforcement.
Well, and we would go check if somebody reported to us if something had happened outside the way.
Yes.
And another reason for going down this line of questioning is one of the previous applications we had, we had an agreement that you could go out at any time to inspect and see different things. Because of the nature and the location of this, was that ever a question or concern from you or the committee to do more of an onsite inspection at various times of the year?
Well, you know, the last one, and that was the Cheland Farm, that was an individual agreement that we would come out, and so I would naturally have to call and ask if it would be all right. And the thing that we would be looking at is the perimeter drain, to see if there's any discharge from the pit going through that, and then also possibly checking where it would reach the stream if we're having any releases from the pit that, and that should not be happening, you know. should not be happening, you know.
Right, and my reason for going down that line of thinking, because there was a lot more outcry and controversy over the last one, the challenge of wanting that agreement, to me was a good faith effort on the part of the applicant to try to address a lot of the public concern about possible runoff and contamination and things of this nature, and I, I think that as we continue to move through looking at construction of, expansion of confinement operations, that environmental issue is always going to be subject for certain groups to be concerned about, perhaps for anything that could get into the streams and rivers, et cetera. My question would be for you to discuss whether you, not, a some type of an agreement like that would be appropriate, because it gives the public a, a different level of assurance that yes, they're going to try to do each and everything that they possibly can in their initial form to be good stewards of the land and so forth. So I'm not putting that as a requirement at this point, but I'm asking for you and the group to talk about as you evaluate where this is located and so forth, whether you think that might be an understanding that you'd like to have with the, with the applicant.
And maybe he could, he could come up and address that. I was looking for, I can't spot him. There he is. The one difference with this one is that because it was an existing one, they already have a discharge plumbed in already. So this one, I don't know exactly how it gets to the creek, you know, if it goes to drain pile or the line right to the creek, or what. So that would be something that he can...
Yeah, and that's part of the reason for asking that third question is because, you know, if you don't have a clear understanding of how that might be, that's always been one of the issues that we've heard over time from some of the citizens that are concerned with the land environment issues.
It's a great idea.
Okay, Margaret, thank you at this point. Before I open the public hearing, did the process seem to work? I mean, was this, was this less cumbersome? Give me your initial assessment of the process.
Well, the first time around, it was, it was more, to be perfectly honest, for me. Next time it'll go really smoothly, I think. So yes, this is working.
Did we do, did we do a reasonable job giving you the expertise surrounding you that you needed to be able to really dig in and assess every one of the questions?
Yes.
Thanks, Margaret. With that, I will open the public hearing, and anybody who wants to speak will be allowed to speak, but we do have a couple that have requested to speak on this issue, and we're going to start with Brenda Brink. Brenda, you don't have on your blue shirt today.
Should've. Sorry to disappoint.
You never disappoint.
My name is Brenda Brink, I live 29514 US Highway sixty-nine near Huxley. I'm here today as a citizen, and I'm here today as a person who is concerned about water quality in Iowa. Now, I used to, I'm still a dietitian, registered dietitian. I used to spend, I spent a total of dozens of years in nursing homes, and the data is pretty clear that our water quality is not just a problem for the nitrates in Iowa and the Gulf of Mexico. Our problem is also antibiotic resistant bacteria. So when I was working in a nursing home taking care of many elderly people, we had such a problem, and hospital staff will tell you this as well, with MRSA, which is methicillin resistant, Staphylococcus aureus, MRSA resistant, and there are other resistant strains of bacteria coming around. So when we have eighty percent of antibiotics in the United States being used for animals, that leaves really nothing for humans, because the huge amount of antibiotics being used in animals is creating superbugs like MRSA. Well, when you have an elderly person, what are they supposed to do? What are the hospital staff supposed to do to treat them? It, it's horrible. And I'm, I tell you, the thing that I saw that was the worst is that when a person has MRSA, they're not supposed to touch anybody. So you have an elderly person, and you have family members who want to take care of that elderly person, you have caregivers who want to take care of that elderly person. You can't touch them. That's how severe that infection is. And many times they, they die because of complications, animals that come in. MRSA's a big problem. We're not seeing any decrease in it. Eighty percent of antibiotics are being used for animal, pretty much preventative care because they live in confinements crowded together, breathing the fetid smell of a manure pit with all the gases that will kill people. I'm against CAFOs, that's no secret, but I'm also talking about water quality in general. Antibiotics need to be kept for people, and until this industry decides to make some changes, decides to get updated, I'm going to be suggesting a moratorium on CAFOs in Iowa. As an Iowan, I feel that's my duty, and so I will recommend a moratorium, and that is my public comment on that. We've seen an increase in impaired waterways of fifteen percent in the last two years. We need to take it seriously. It could be your family member, it could be my family member, I think we need to take care of Iowans. And I would hope that the board supervisors takes this leadership, because you don't have to approve anything. I know you say you don't have anything you can do, but I would look for leadership, and that's what I, my public comment is.
Brenda, thank you. Good morning. Please start by introducing yourself and giving your address.
Good morning. My name is Ron Cheltenham, my wife and Deb, we live fourteen and sixty-eight, Seventh Twentieth Avenue, Zerling, Iowa. We live one mile north of this proposed hog confinement. Summertime, we hear we have a trip coming north from South Bend. Double this, not much more worse in the summertime. There's no people living on this place, so they don't have to deal with this. This is your backyard, you had one area, it's just light, you know. I've worked in hog plant three and a half years, I started, finished, I know its life, I know the dust that you're in the buildings, hazardous it is, so I, I know the situation.
Thank you, Ron.
Yeah, it's, I'm not surprised there aren't very many people here to, to oppose this because it's in a very rural area, there aren't very many others that live close to this hog confinement. One is enough, in my opinion. Very seldom in the summertime do we get to open windows now with the South Greece, which we always get South Greece is in, in central Iowa. Two, we will always smell hog blood, and I just don't feel that we should have to. And the owners of the company will go home and open their windows every night and not have an issue. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else wishing to speak to this application? Okay, see, you know, one moving to the microphone, I'll close the public hearing. Jessica or Ethan, I hate if I'm putting you on the spot, but it's been suggested, Brenda suggested that this board ought to in some way exert some authority and, and deal with this for the, for the good of Iowa, and I'll commend Brenda, she is ultra passionate and ultra consistent in, in how she goes about it and where her passion lies, but we want you to come up and just remind the board and, and the public what our role, the board supervisor's role, is in all this today.
Yes, thank you, and important comments, Brenda. The board's role in this is to simply make a recommendation to DNR. You can base that on the score, you can base it on the public comments. It's your role just to make a recommendation, and I don't say that I would do. At this stage, they've got a passing score, and for the public comments, now it's your decision whether or not you recommend it to DNR or you disapprove of the application and not recommend it. That's the limit of your authority in this.
Thank you. Wayne, I'll turn to you, thoughts?
First of all, before I put this in form of motion for discussion, I've always been very consistent when I look at feeding operations. We, we do live in an agricultural state. That's not going to go away. The farming industry today is a lot different than what it used to be. We always hear people referencing the old days and the way that they used to farm and so forth. Those days are largely gone. People who go into agri-business are just like, say, a Walmart or a Duquesne, that they, it's a profit. They're trying to maximize, you know, their lifestyle, and obviously, we have some environmental concerns, issues, if there are nearby lakes or rivers or streams that could have major impact on the development. I think we have taken steps in the past, in one particular communication, to voice our disapproval, and so the location of that was somewhat altered. What I'd also like to say from my standpoint is I am very concerned and will pretend to be concerned about new development, new people that have never done this before. If you are already a producer, you've got an existing hog confinement, and you're talking about expansion, then the question is again, location and proximity to particular water sources, and also the communities that are basically going to be impacted by this. And I see that in this particular case, and I think it's very valid for us to not dismiss the fact that one nearby resident is concerned about the summertime and the odor and things of this nature. That is obviously something that people who live in rural areas are going to have to deal with. The question is, is whether or not they legally are allowed by law to expand their service and their operations, and do they meet all the necessary requirements as any other business or industry would, which puts us in a difficult situation. So Mr. Sanders, basically, based on what I've heard here and so forth, my comment is I'm going to move that we go ahead and approve the construction operations permit, and then pass this on to the DNR with the comments that have basically been received here today, et cetera.
Okay, and I'll second that, and for me, it, I try to boil this down to as black and white as possible, and the reality is, four forty was required as a passing score. I feel like we've put together a great team to impartially review this. In fact, a couple items, I think when we sent it through to the committee were disallowed, where the applicant had suggested that they earned points, and our group said they did not, however, they still reached the, the passing score. I completely feel, feel for, for Ron and Pam, I think Ron said anybody in here would not want this in their backyard, I think that's, that's a hundred percent true. I equally cannot, I equally cannot find in Story County a better location than one that already has an existing confinement on it, and, and has proven themselves to be very, very solid operators through the years. So I second your motion. Further discussion?
No, I think at some point, the saturation of Story County, particularly when it comes to new confinement operations, other groups moving in, needs to always be in the back of our mind. So far, there is no measure that I'm aware of that basically say we will only allow X number of confinement operations and so forth, but I do think that the question always comes back to is whether or not you use a term, I don't like the term moratorium because that basically says that, and nothing is basically going to be allowed, but I do think at some point we need to evaluate, say, an out of landlord or tenant that is not currently living and operating that facility. And at what point do we basically say, Story County has reached this saturation level, and that's a judgment call, but that's always a concern for us, I think. In future, this is, we need to always keep that thought in mind. You can comment if you like.
Andrea?
I've had the, I've had the opportunity to do a lot of fieldwork in Hardin County recently, I'm helping them out, and there are way more confinements there. Oh my gosh, it's a, it's a beautiful county, and then if you go along, you know, there's, the hillsides are just dotted with these, and that is a huge revenue stream for them. But I will say that, boy, you're hard pressed to get fresh air, and I know it's the manure spreading time of the year, so that really affects odor of the air. And I would just really hate to see Story County going that route. I don't think, I know that we're not there yet, and I think it's really important for everybody to express their concern each and every time one of these applications come in, just to let the industry know that there are so many concerns on so many levels, and I think the county is doing a good job of, is trying to look at each and every one, but there is no way right now for us to have a decision.
Well, and I would just say this, Margaret, I think it's completely appropriate for you and the other members of the committee that we formed to score these very, very tough, I mean, you know, you either earn the points or you don't. I appreciate that you guys went through line by line and, and tried to figure out if the points were earned or if they were not, and the places that you guys felt they weren't earned, you disallowed them. I think that's the appropriate way for us to do this until and unless state law is changed.
And I will say, Master Matrix, pretty much, you can get the points to pass, you know, it's, it's quite doable in this county, yeah.
Okay, thanks, Margaret. Clinton?
Aye.
Sanders, aye, it passes. Next item on our agenda is an additional public hearing item, is consideration of Resolution sixteen fifty-seven, amending the urban renewal plan in Hardin.
I have just a few slides to run through the board before we open up for public hearing. The item before you this morning is the discussion consideration of Resolution number sixteen dash fifty-seven. It is taking action to amend the urban renewal plan in Story County, Iowa, Story County urban renewal area. Just some background, back in March, towards the end of March, the board supervisors gave direction to staff to develop a timeline and write forward changes to urban renewal plan to incorporate the Story County Conservation Park and the Iowa State University Research Park. Following that, early part of April, April fifth, the board took action to set up a consultation meeting with affected taxing entities. That meeting occurred on April twelfth, and then following that, the taxing entities had an opportunity to provide a comment back to the board by the nineteenth. The board did receive a comment, and from that did in turn provide written comments back to taxing entities, and those went out on April twenty-ninth. We haven't been told, maybe May third, a week before today's date, to get those out. We have received additional comments, I'll share at the end, following the written comments the board's sent out. We have received additional comments that I'll share at the end, following the written comments the board sent out. I will share those when we have questions too. I'm going to go over just kind of quickly is the overview of the amendments and then if we'll take action on Resolution Number 16-57 and I'll review the next steps. Quite simply, the resolution just amends Sections 2 and 5 of the urban renewal plan to, and both slides, or both sections are the same in this slide, remove references to the fire station project that was in Collins. This was kind of an oversight on my end that we had not received this. It was never funded, it was never approved project, so it's really a housekeeping item. We have the plan open and so I wanted to take the opportunity to clean it up. Really, the major change is adding a new project, which is Number 25 for the Iowa State University Research Park, Story County Conservation Park. I will say, the language that's in the draft plan is verbatim from the agreement that the board reached with Iowa State University Research Park to actually have this as part of the Phase 3 expansion plan. So, that's Sections 2 and 5. Then Section 8 is the one that deals with county financial information. And thank you to Lisa Markley for making sure I have the right numbers in here. The areas identified, highlighted in yellow are those areas proposed to be amended. So, our outstanding general obligation debt on the top section of the table and in the bottom table, it proposed TIF debt to be incurred, which is $1.5 million for this particular project, or this particular phase of the project. And then existing TIF debt, which would be then $2.3 million roughly. I do want to note that the overall project is about $3.5 million. The action that you may take today will be repeated again next year around this time as well as the following year with similar amounts in that posted TIF debt to be incurred. The map as well is a component of the plan. That is amended to incorporate Project Number 25. And in the consultation meeting, there was a suggestion made that we take the legend and put it on its homepage, which was a wonderful suggestion. So, this is what I did. That's what's on the right-hand side too. That's something that the board had not yet seen. Wonderful comment made to do that because it is really difficult to read. So, your next steps, action on the resolution today. And then, if it is approved, we begin the financing process. And that is kind of where I do hand the baton off to the county attorney's office. We've set some tentative dates, the public hearing on May 31st, to consider going along the lines of taxing from a resident loan agreement and then solicitation bids in early June. And then, the public hearing again, late, later part of June to actually approve that loan agreement and issue the loans. So, with that, I do want to share some comments that were received last week by the board. These are from Marty Chitty. And you'll be able to read them all as well.
Yes, please.
I would like to extend my appreciation of the-
Tell us your more ideas first.
Marty Chitty, thank you, is the board president of Nevada Community School District. So, he's writing on behalf of Nevada Community School District. "I would like to extend my appreciation of the work provided by Wayne Riege yourself these past four years. The restructuring of this county's government was long overdue and didn't appear to be an easy task. While you may have many more things you wish to see done, I want to say thank you. The difference is both seen and unseen, but it is too positive. The movement to insert counties' place in encouraging growth is a minimum position. Growth seems confined and sporadic, sporadic if it happens at all throughout the county. The board's use of funds, TIF, etc., has done much good in our smaller communities. But with the courage to take on and open up the TIF zones in Story County, it should also entail the will to end them as well. They removed monies from both Colonesco and Nevada Schools for 20-year stints and are only reimbursed by the state 90% of the dollars taken. Nevada School District is under the 9th through 11th, it changes yearly, highest TIF district in the state. I'm unsure about Colonesco's standing. My fervent wish is to both see an end to each school's TIF zones made by the county after 20 years and to see the dollars raised be used toward other needs than the Iowa State, ISU Research Park project. In short, please don't commit a temporary funding stream to a needed renewal my decision made today. Some plainly shown clarity on who and how much each would be paying for the ISU project would be of help to me in understanding the scope of this project. Thanks to the board's attention to making Story County's future, Story County's future a brighter place. Regards, Marty Chitty, Nevada County School District President." With that, I'll be glad to answer any questions.
That one and the other one that we had received earlier from Harden, is that the only two?
To my knowledge, those are the only two.
Have you received any others?
I've not received any others. Questions for the end?
No, I think, man, this, the process pretty much is outlined for us. I met this morning, just wanted to double check with you exactly what the action was at this time. And it's actually just to be able to consider, you know, the adding the research to amend the plan to add the research project as well as removing the one item that was basically listed there. So, this does not actually commit us to how it's going to be financed at this point, but it just starts the process, which means that the approval of this would indicate though that we would be anticipating looking at TIF funding to do that. But it's my understanding that there will need to be a follow-up meeting to determine that process and so forth, so-
Well, this doesn't commit the funding.
Right.
But it absolutely opens the door to, so you can't use TIF funding without passing this. You can pass this and then not use TIF funding down the road. So, it's just really important that you're clear that this very claim, we're going to hear from Harden here in just a minute, who's going to tell us exactly that, this opens the door to be able to utilize the TIF funding there. And so, if that's something you're opposed to, you just soon see us shut this down. Say anything else? With that, we'll open the public hearing. We have one who has requested and of course, anybody else who wishes to speak to it will be able to as well. Arden Ryan. Arden, that's a bad sign when you stand up and I hear noise like that.
Arden Ryan, Sherman Township. Briefly, I want to express my sentiments to Paul's family and friends, everyone in the county.
He's a good man.
As a homegrown country boy, you always depend on him, have common sense in all of our issues, so. Just briefly, because we have a big audience here. TIF, TIF, we, coming from the TIF district of approximately 124 wind towers in the Colonesco School District and a couple more over here.
Yeah, I mean, let's just, let's sum up. So, all the, all the wind towers, majority of which in Colonesco, two, these two big ones right here, they were in the Nevada School District, and the veteran construction site are the, are the three revenue sources for TIF. Go ahead.
Right, right. Veterans, they spent their money, blacktopping the road, I think.
Spent some money, blacktopping their road, right.
The veterans in the entry project, they spend $160,000 a year for property tax on that facility. So, what we're doing is we're taking the next 20 years of future income on the wind turbines, mostly in the Colonesco School District, and going to spend it on a conservation park, Story County Conservation Park right next to the ISU Research Park in Ames. And I think that, that tax receipt should stay inside the local townships where they're derived. There's been legislation introduced in Iowa Legislature to do just that this year. And long-term, TIF, I mean, TIF started in California 34 years ago and a big contributing factor, like California's in shape right today, just spending future tax money on projects and then the taxes get, have to be higher and higher. There's also a caveat in this that said, after Story County's going to spend $3.4 million building this park, that there's a point in there where it could be sold back to the ISU Research Park for a dollar. And I don't understand why that's in there, why it's pre-determined. I think between ISU and the Ames community, I think you should be able to find other funding for this project. And I think you should remove the pre-determined and taxable values, resell it back for a dollar. I've also always been concerned that this Story County Conservation Park is going to be part of their stormwater runoff requirements. And they're going to pick up a lot of those costs. But in the agreement, Story County, we do pay the maintenance on that stormwater runoff.
We're going to keep the park, yeah, we're going to keep the park, yep.
And personally, I mean, we had six inches of rain in December. I just spent $2,000 on one little site that washed out on my farm this year. So, that could be a huge cost in the future, taking care of their stormwater runoff in their park. So, those are my comments.
Yeah, and I'll just say, you know, we've got a lot of people here and actually, Arden and I are fairly entertaining from time to time when we start going back forth. Arden has been ultra-consistent from day, I mean, I think you called me the day this came up, probably five years ago. And you've been steadfast in how you view this and where you view it going and what your concerns are, and so I want to compliment you on that. Clearly, you and I see things a little differently a lot of the time on some of this. But I really appreciate your consistency and the fact that you're battling for what you believe in. So, thanks for your comments.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else who wishes to address the board during the public hearing? All right, I'll close the public here. Yeah, Ted, do you want to come up as Chair of Conservation or maybe not Chair of Conservation, member of the Conservation Board?
Ted Zelzko, member of the Conservation Board. I'm also one of the two members of the board, Dr. Jim Pease and myself, been assigned to this project through its planning stages and up to this point. This particular project is of great importance to both the urban and the rural communities within our county. This will become a living classroom to dealing with stormwater runoff, which Arden just talked about and the silt that it causes, the nitrates and the phosphates that are getting into our water system. And would like to relate back, I served as eight years as Mayor of the City of Ames. During that time, we formed what is called Ames-Story County for housing the riots that involved all of the communities of the county. They were assessed according to the portion of their population. We did house, a triple house, give, and diverse communities within this county, also renovations to try to make more options available to the total citizenship of the county. The Ames taxpayers did not complain that we spent money on within the county and other communities. I think we always need to look at the greater picture, which is the total citizens who are in the county. And this project, project in particular, could be not only for our county, but for our entire state, just be moving forward with that sort of water quality issue.
Thanks, Ted. I mean, so the hope in goal, and I'm so appreciative to Ted and Mike and Dr. Jim Pease for working so hard on this. The hope here is that we're going to build a model that puts Story County at the forefront in dealing with water quality. I mean, now we're circling all the way back to Brenda Brink's comments earlier about the dire situation that we have in water quality here in Iowa and nationwide. But it's going to allow us, as you said, to have a living classroom where we can explore the best ways to deal with some of that. And when you look at the lawsuit that's going on right now between DeBoer Water Works and the counties, I think it's in Story County the best interest to be at the forefront. Anybody else who wants to speak as part of the public hearing? Yes, sir. Steve, how you doing today?
Good, good. I'm Steve Berger. I direct the Research Park. And I thought I just might make a couple of quick comments. The Research Park, for those who don't know, is kind of a unique economic development. It's been around for nearly 30 years. And the whole idea is to take advantage of the Iowa State University as an engine for the United States, as a creator of new ideas and then training young folks in the whole field, generating great new jobs. And over the 25 years that we've been around, we've done pretty well. So, we have about 60 companies and about 1,500 people. And what's unique about Research Parks is it doesn't benefit just a particular community. It benefits Story County, it benefits the state of Iowa because of the unique nature of the companies that we have, their relationship with the university and the kinds of folks that are attracted. And so, in thinking about that and in our discussions with Conservation Board, we took a look at some statistics that we had developed through a survey about a year and a half ago. And out of the 1,400 folks, we found that about 50% live in Story County. And of those, a quarter live outside of Ames. So, the majority live in Ames, but there's a substantial number of folks who live in all the communities around Story County.
So, in, so 12, 12.5% of the workforce of the Research Park resides in Story County but outside of Ames. You said 25% of the 50.
Right, right. And so, so that translates into about 180 jobs. And we looked at salaries, about five years ago, we did a survey on salaries. On the average salary, it'd be $68,000. So, that, those are dollars that are earned in Ames, but they're taken back to those communities. And I think that's the nature of economic development these days. It isn't just a local activity. It is more and more a regional, statewide activity. Particularly in something as unique as Research Park. There are only two in the state of Iowa and there are only about 150 in North America. So, these aren't things that are going to pop up in their corner in the main. So, I thought that was a little context.
I think that's great. I got a couple of questions, if you don't mind, in real general terms, not trying to put you on the spot, Steve. But talk to me about the total scope of this, this project that we're working on. So, it's been rightly pointed out that what Story County has agreed to is to fund about $3.4 million to put in this county-owned park. We haven't agreed yet how we're paying for that, but we've agreed to do that. Tell me how that fits into the entire project that you guys are looking at and where those funds are coming from?
And I might provide a little context, but it's how we came to the plan that we have. As we began to run out of the ground, that was the original Research Park, which is about 200 acres. And I would point out that the creation of the Research Park originally was a partnership between the university, the community of Ames, the state of Iowa and Story County. And so, when we came back, we communicated with each of those parties, but spent a lot of time talking to our tenant companies and asking them what was going to be important for them in terms of a physical environment that would help attract more companies like them but also help them attract the talent, the young people that they were going to need for the next 10, 15 years. And what we learned was they wanted to see a lot more amenities, that the people they were recruiting wanted convenience and they wanted access to restaurants and the fitness centers and daycare and recreational opportunities. If you come through Research Park today, you're going to see people walking, riding bikes. We learned that we had a half a dozen employees of one company who routinely ride their bikes from Akeem in the morning days for work. So, in that context, we- So, in that context, we created a plan to expand 200 acres, anticipating and looking for ways to create this different kind of environment than what we had done. And we had, the engineering that we had estimated that it was going to be somewhere in the area of $35 million to create that physical environment. Now, that doesn't include the buildings and some of those sorts of things. This year alone, we have generated approximately $50 million in construction. That's roads, that's sanitary extension, water extension, internet extension, storm water management, and the city has contributed, the State of Iowa has contributed through the RISE program, the university has contributed by donation of the 100 acres that were now in the process of expanding. Iowa State also secured an appropriation from the State of Iowa for $12 million in buildings. So, between the buildings, physical improvements, this year alone, $50 million. Is that...
Yeah, absolutely. And expectation on increased employment at the Research Park, as you project out what's going to happen out there, what are you guys looking at?
So, based on our current density of companies and people per company and acreage, and we extend that to this 200 acres, we have come up with a plan that'll allow us a more dense form of development. So, we're looking at growing the Research Park from about 1,500 people, all built out, 6,000 people. So, again, if you then apply those numbers, that means something like 3,000 people, employment of 3,000 people in Ames and about 800 and some around the county. If those proportions...
Sure. Thanks, Steve. Any questions for Steve Wayne?
Not for Steve, but more of a comment, it probably has more application to comment that Arden gave a little bit earlier. I just wanted to be able to hear from each of the members that wanted to speak on this particular topic. But let me put this in context. About three years ago, Steve and members of the Research Planning Committee reached out to Story County. I was invited to sit in on one of the earliest meetings where we laid out the scope and the design for this, and at that time, the question was, is how can Story County become engaged and be a part of the vision that was being obstructed, recognizing the tremendous impact of job creation, the research component, and so forth? And while at that time, it wasn't decided that a park or trail would be ideal, but you could see from the schematic design and drawing that that was certainly something that they wanted to have because they talked about amenities that would be there for the employees of the Research Park, and I'm going to use the term warkovia, and bringing the total number of jobs over a long period of time. But what impressed me most was, is they just didn't see this at that time as just an Ames area, that only Ames citizens or residents would be able to use. And I think, I may have made a quick reference to say, you know, maybe this is something that our conservation people might want to take a look at, to see if there's a partnership or an opportunity for the county to play a role. And it was not my thought at that time, that yes, the Conservation Board would want to move and take over a park. But I think at that time, I kind of mentioned that as a possibility, and what I'm proud to say at this point, Steve, is that I've sat here in a couple of other meetings, and I'm sure you have also, Mr. Sanders, regarding this process, and the fact that we have members of the Conservation Board that have diligently looked at this project and looked at what it could do for the entire water quality issue, wetland mitigation, connectivity to trails, outdoor laboratories. Last evening at the board meeting, we were talking about working with ISU students, designing the design phase at the living laboratory. Now, those things to me are once-in-a-lifetime, a very rare entity that comes up. It just so happens that this source of funding provides a mechanism for us to be able to expand county-wide. I looked at our TIF situation that was set in, I think when we put it in place, we agreed that we would only use 50% of the growth, so that all the taxing entities still knew the date we're going to receive, you know, taxable benefits from the wind turbine. And so, if we were only using 50% of those, it seemed logical for me that this is going to be beyond just one particular area. Our first project was a heavy investment in the Ziering area because there was a need for water quality improvement in the Dakens Lake area. To me, conservation stepped up to the plate. Had we not used TIF dollars there, we probably would still be in the planning and design phase right now for the Dakens Lake area. So, I see this as another opportunity for us to use a funding source for the greater benefit of all story towns. And I can respect the fact that there are differences of opinion about whether it should remain in the community by which these are there, but I'd also like to go back to Arden's comment, Senate File 2006, that was proposed. I serve on the Iowa Association of Counties Supervisors' Exec Board and the I-Site Board of Directors, and I work with our lobbyists, and all along, I was asking questions about this proposal and what was the likelihood that it would gain any traction, and so forth. I believe a gentleman on Southeast Iowa actually brought this to forefront. What the general consensus is, is that the legislature did not want to take this issue up. The idea of using TIF dollars is a local control issue. It's left up to each local entity, board supervising, et cetera, to use this to, in their best interest, for the betterment of their particular county. And so, therefore, this didn't go anywhere. So, when you reference this, please understand that it was just something that was proposed for consideration. So, it has gone nowhere, and as far as I'm told, that it's more than likely not going to go anywhere, but that's not to say that in future years, there will be a change in leaders or representatives, that this cannot come up and be a change at this point. So, I just don't want the public to assume that the legislators is agreeing with you that these dollars should be only used in those particular taxing entities. So, from that standpoint, I believe that there has been a clear case for, in my opinion, for Story County to play a very important role in management of this park area, which has tremendous economic development opportunities, outdoor recreational opportunities. The question always is, is this an effective use of TIF dollars? Should you use it on recreational kinds of things? Well, to me, Dakens Lake is a recreational kind of thing. So, it's a question of where we are going to come down on whether the proper use is. And so, with that, Mr. Sanders...
We need to close the public hearing first before you go any further. All right, and before we close the public hearing, yeah, Arden, we'll come right back to you. Before we, before we close the public hearing, Steve, you might want to stay for this. Mike, Arden brought up the possibility of selling the park back to Iowa State for $1. Would you address that for us, please? And then, Arden, we'll have you come back up.
I certainly would hope you would do that.
Yeah.
I appreciate everyone's comments on this. And Steve, thank you for being here. Ted, thank you. Thank you for your leadership on the Conservation Board, and for Greg Meyer, who serves as the Chair of our Board, that's here in the audience today. A little difficult, like Harvey, with the project as well. But to address your question, you know, when we were approached with this project, we saw this as an opportunity to address, to address many issues, from economic issues to environmental issues, social issues, et cetera. And it's a good opportunity, and I think all of that falls right in line with what the Conservation Board is trying to achieve, and heard this morning. You know, it's no surprise Iowa has a water quality issue. You know, Iowa has an issue, particularly Central Iowa right now, with the population expanding and people looking for more and more recreational opportunities. We know that the traditional commercial development, traditional business models for employee attraction don't work anymore. We know that. We know that getting people out into outside, recreating, enjoying clean air, enjoying clean water, et cetera, have a direct and tangible economic impact in those areas. And demonstrated this at Dakens Lake, and it's been demonstrated with many projects throughout Iowa, including trail projects. So, this is, this particular project really gives us the opportunity to address many of those fronts. As Ted said, and very eloquently said, that this would be a living lab. We, in our initial phases of discussion of entertaining this, we reached out to many. We reached out to the City of Ames, we reached out to, obviously, ISU, many different aspects of ISU. We reached out to the state on many different levels, and had discussions about how we can manage this project to best achieve those needs that I just addressed, economic, environmental, social, et cetera. And so, we think we've come up with a very good, very, very good project that's going to achieve those needs and be a demonstration project for the rest of the coming. What happens when we're involved, and I don't want to sound like we're the only ones that can make that happen, however, I think that the county is uniquely poised to bring those entities together and to achieve, as Wayne said, some of the benefits that can be best achieved and most realized through the county involvement.
What other group in Story County manages a conservation kind of park? So, I think Laura's pointed out, I don't know if it's been a couple of weeks ago, suggested the possibility of putting in some kind of a playfield, right? His playfield, as I recall, for handicap, the Miracle Field, and I pointed out to her at that time that that's not the kind of park we're talking, we're not talking about a city park when you think of this. We're talking about McFarlane Park, or Dakens Lake, I mean, something that has more of that feel. Who else in Story County can do that if not Story County Conservation, Mike?
So, that's a good point, and I think that's why we're at the table, because we are the ones that do that. We manage 30-some odd parks, depends on what you want to call it, park versus a lot of area, nature area, et cetera, but over 3,000 acres in the county. And I feel like we do it effectively, and we've got a tremendous volunteer county base and community engagement component, and it's a community behind that, and they say that routinely, time and time again. And so, we're pleased to be able to do that, we're pleased to be able to be kind of an engine that can bring those entities together and those folks together to enjoy the kinds of quality of life, the purpose of what we need. And so, yeah, I don't think this project, the Conservation Board certainly doesn't have any intention of this being a short-term project. This is a long-term project, and I think the Conservation Board is interested in it in that extent, and continuing this relationship.
Well, there's nothing in the agreement that says we would ever have to sell it back or do anything. It says if the county were to ever decide that we weren't going to participate, that it would revert to the university.
Correct.
That's where the land's coming from. I mean, you know...
If I could briefly just... One of the things that I think will be gratifying through this entire process is, one, we've said from the outset, everything, we can't get this done by ourselves. We're really a very small organization, very limited, such as you said, and we would be dependent on their advice. And what I've come to appreciate, particularly with this exercise, is it's left to us to come up with an idea for this conservation park. Our tenants, our companies, our people want walking by defense. That was one of the things we had to do. They wanted sustainable development, so it's not just in this park, it's also in how we're looking to develop this. Those were the two things we came and really started our conversation. And the Conservation Board has opened this up to a much bigger, better vision. We would not have been capable of coming up with some of the ideas that conservation has helped us understand aspects of this that are important for all of these. So, it is their leadership that has made this a better project than it would have been. So, we thank them.
Well, and I appreciate that, Steve, because I agree with you. I think we have a phenomenal Conservation Board and staff here in Story County, but they bring in expertise that nobody else brings. And this project, so we get the question, well, why would the county have a county park inside the city limits? Because there's nobody else that can do this. It's not like Ames Parks and Rec, Ted, could do something like this. That's not what they're designed to do. And it's an opportunity for, you know, what is ultimately going to be, well, by the time you include build-out and everything else, a project that's going to be well into the hundreds of millions of dollars, it's, as I see it, appropriate for Story County to play a role in that, and more importantly, to have some control over what this is going to look like and what it's going to do, and then when you add the benefits of a close relationship with Iowa State and the ability to teach that next generation of people that are going to be dealing with water quality, I really see it as a win-win-win. Mike, anything else we need to let Arden come back up and address? Okay. Steve, thanks. Arden?
Just briefly, first of all, all the thanks going around, nobody oversees the tax payers that end up paying for all this. They will have to go out for it.
And you're the only one looking out for the taxpayers, Arden. Be real good.
Okay. Let them know the bank, I never know the banks. The, I was at the Ames Research Park, the Center of Law and Taxation, I mean, but anyhow, I noticed an awful lot of vacant space in the Research Park, maybe rooms and offices. I just wanted to ask, Steve, of the current Research Park, what is the occupancy rate?
Steve, you have that off the top of your head?
Today, it'd be probably 90, over 90%.
Okay, I just noticed that, because I think the center bank has been, had law taxation been about, okay.
We have people moving in and out.
Okay, I just want to, I just want to...
Yep, thank you. Okay, with that, I'll close the public hearing, and turn to the board for act. Wayne?
I will move approval of Resolution 1657, which amends the urban renewal plan, and which will ban direct staff to... will then direct staff to have discussions and meetings regarding the financial, the county financial involvement in this as we move forward.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll second it, and I want to say a couple of things as I second. First of all, Paul Tupe was an absolute fan of this project. I mean, you go back and you look at the minutes of, of these things, what he was highly concerned about, and rightly highly concerned, was, was it, was it going to be appropriate to utilize this funding mechanism, TIF, in order to build this park? I mean, Paul's been right there all the way through in terms of this park is the right thing to do, is the right thing for Conservation to take on. He has not been steadfastly there that TIF dollars were the right thing, right mechanism to use. I think it's important to point out, quite frankly, as I sit here today, I don't have any idea where our friend Paul Tupe would have come down on this. I'll tell you where I'd come down, and that is irrespective of where my friend Paul Tupe would have come down. It's a, it's a slippery slope if we ever start to draw lines within Story County. Story County is Story County. The three of us are elected to serve all of Story County and serve the taxpayers and utilize their dollars in the best way possible. This Board balanced the budget for the first time in 25 years, cut $6 million in actual spending, has increased our ending fund balance from six million, projected $6 million to about $12 million now. This Board has been ultra demonstratable, ultra responsible with taxpayer dollars. I come to work every day to serve the taxpayers of Story County, and this idea that they're not thought of or not appreciated is ludicrous. Second thing I'll say is if we start to draw lines within Story County and say, oh, these dollars come from this area of the county, and so they better only be utilized there, you better be really, really careful about that, because the reality is here in Story County, Wayne, we have about $7 billion of taxable valuation in Story County, roughly $7 billion. Five billion of that, fully five billion of that plus comes from the one-third of the county that is west of I-35. And less than $2 billion of that $7 billion in valuation comes from the two-thirds of the county that we're sitting in right now. And so if we ever start to draw lines and say, oh, we're only going to spend dollars where they come from, our county's going to be in tough shape, because we're going to have haves and have-nots within the county. The reality is if it's good for Story County, and I don't care if it happens in Zirin or Ames or anywhere else, if it's good for the county, it's good for the county. And, and Steve started talking about numbers. Can you imagine 800 new residents in Story County that don't live in Ames? What that does for our school districts? You want to help our school districts, who are already getting 90% of the funding that comes out because of TIF fact-filled? You want to help them? Let's get some additional kids in their school system, because that helps it. But most importantly, it's an opportunity for Story County to be a leader, to be a participant in what is a great project, not only for Story County but all of Central Iowa, be a leader in water quality issues and how we're going to deal with that in the long term. And I believe there's no other appropriate mechanism to pay for this than utilizing, utilizing TIF. I, you know, it was, it was one of those conversations that I had circled on the calendar, because I knew that Paul Tupe and I were going to have this conversation as we went through, and I was going to make the case, and he was going to do what he did all the way through. You talk about a guy with common sense and a guy who could see the big picture, and he was highly concerned, and it would have been really interesting to get his take on all of this. But I want to make sure that, that we lay out that he, he was worried about whether this was the appropriate way to do it. I think it is. Leanne, close us out.
So again, today your action is on Resolution Number 1657, and as we said, that just sets a frame, that amends the plan to incorporate the Iowa State Research Park as a project, and then the financing mechanism will come over the next month and a half.
So there's still an opportunity, if we go ahead and pass this, that we may not use TIF funding, but this very clearly opens the door that that's where we're headed. Right? Okay. Further discussion? Clinton?
Aye.
Sanders, aye. It passes. We're going to take a three-minute recess, and then we'll come back and finish off our agenda.
I just want to, it's very quick when you see that.
I don't know. I can't really say. It's not going to happen. It's a break.
How do you horse?
Fine, thanks, Rick. Do I look awake?
I don't. I mean, this guy's always seen me.
He's always been a good man.
I know.
Yeah.
I'm sure.
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 Yes, please.
Rick, you need a water?
Yes. All right. Yeah, I'm going to do it on announcements. I'm going to make sure Austin gets it fully. All right, I'm going to call us back into session. I don't know that I need the hammer, but I like it. Consideration of Resolution 1663, approving and authorizing loan agreement with Zion Bank, Salt Lake City, Utah, as a lender, providing for the issuance of a $2.430, three-zero million dollar general obligation refinancing bond. Lucy Martin.
Okay. We've been meeting several times through the spring to discuss refinancing our callable bonds. We looked at both traditional placement for those and the board on private placement. So this resolution is just to authorize the sale issuance of those bonds. That decision has been made to pass, so I think we, we made that decision on April 12th. We, the county, you and board did that, and this resolution has been prepared by our bond council.
Remind me what we're saving the taxpayers of Story County for refinancing?
Approximately $73,000 by refinancing the 2008 and 2009 callable bonds.
Wayne, questions?
Nope, not, not.
Oh, why did we go with a bank out of Utah instead of a bank in Iowa?
We tried to do a private placement locally. Piper Jeffrey looked into that for us, and there was just simply no appetite for that in the local banks. It's not an instrument that they are interested in at this point in time. So we, we did get an interest from Zion's Bank out of Salt Lake City, and the board decided to go with that.
So we tried to do it locally, couldn't do it, still save the taxpayers $73,000.
Absolutely.
All right. Wayne?
I would move Resolution 1653, approving and authorizing the loan agreement with Zion Bank, Salt Lake City, for the issuing of a $2,430,000 general obligation refinancing refunding bond.
Second, further discussion? Clinton?
Aye.
Sanders, aye. It passes. Lucy, thanks for your work on this.
Thank you so much.
Uh, next item is consideration of sending FY16 final budget amendment to the county newspapers for publication. Thanks, Dean. Lisa Martin.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Lisa, how you doing today?
Um, what you have in front of you is the documentation for the budget amendment that we're proposing. It's going to go to the paper for publication, so that if we have a public hearing on May 31st to amend this, I hold on to that as I possibly could for all the whistling items that are being, you know, brought up and or needed and required. Overall, the revenue's a lot of 7.9% from the last amended budgets that came out, and expenses are more than 9.8% from the last amended budget in September. The bond refinancing that you just finalized increases revenue, the dollar amount is 2.4.
Yeah. So we've got an additional 2.4 coming in and an additional 2.4 going out.
Right. The, and the control vote purchase is included in here. And speaking of the, and recently, we're not totally positive, so we're going to have to buy into the fiscal year, but we're, we're going to, so we need to have the money in there in case it does. And the no-help regional payments.
Which was more than we had budgeted.
Right. We budgeted two, but it's going to be closer to 2.4. So.
But those are dollars that are in our reserve fund and moving to the region.
Yeah, they're, they're not going to be in any, any kind of non-essential, they're going to be split. The documentation you provided to each department's revenues and expenses that I'm looking to amend. There were very few requests, actually. A couple of departments made specific requests to the amendment, but the majority of the amendment is for pay and pay-related items. We originally budgeted and we amended. We did not appropriate, we did not budget the entire hundred percent that would be out there on the spend. We were kind of, we were kind of budgeting closer to the actual. So this should take care of giving everybody, you know, money together for the rest. Any unbalances with this amendment? Our general fund will be about 27%, sub amount will be about 32%. Health fund will be down 1.5%, which is what they want us to be.
Yep.
Seventeen percent for the road fund and about 36% for secondary roads.
And secondary roads, we're going to take care of some of that with what we have budgeted for next year.
For next year.
So really solid in terms of percentages all the way across.
Very solid.
Go.
So basically, what I want to do is bring you the information, so you can ask me questions. And now that the public hearing is going to be scheduled on for May 31st, you can lower at that public hearing, which you cannot bring.
What we propose. Wayne, any?
No, no. I would just move consideration, move the FY16 final budget amendment for publication. Do I need to include in that motion the fact that the 5/31st will be?
You just did, and I second. Second, further discussion? Clinton?
Aye.
Sanders, aye. Passes. Lisa, thank you. Discussion and consideration of the Crestview Mobile Hole Park, members of our Treasurer's Office. Old woman.
Hi, Jan.
Hi.
Wow.
Appreciate you coming in to talk to us about this. This has been an interesting issue, remains an interesting issue.
Because I, I know either one of you are probably 100% of the speakers because we've been dealing with food hall. And I talked to him last Wednesday afternoon, and he thought it would be best, I break the questions to the board this week, before the, this afternoon, the public meeting with the residents of Crestview at 4:30.
Super.
Which is fine, but I have some questions I know they're going to be asking me, and I don't have the right answers.
Let's try to get there.
Well, there's 62 units out there.
Thirty-one of them, as I recall from last week, actually have residents in debt.
Correct.
Okay.
Logical guess, there's probably five or six that do hold a clear title to their trailer. And if they have the ways and means or if the trailer is movable, that will have the option to move that trailer out, assuming that the taxes are paid.
Right.
And they come in and get a tax clearance. We currently have a little over 54,000 outstanding taxes sitting on that mobile hole park.
Would you believe me if you say, if I said I was shocked? Would you? No? Okay.
So because that's private information between the renter and the grant, if they come in with their documents saying they are renting to own, but don't have the title, as award, how are, how far are you going to go to evade taxes to get this question? Because there's trailers that are empty that have taxes to own. There's trailers that are occupied that have taxes to own. Not sure who has the titles, today.
Yep.
These are unusual circumstances, and at the end of the day, we have to look at, you know, the individual people's ability to meet the financial obligations that is outstanding or against them. But I would assume, and I think as you rightfully are raising, that there could obviously be some that are going to be in a very difficult position to come up with the necessary documentation or to be able to come up with the taxes that are owed. And so the question basically is, since we are trying to establish some type of assistance for relocation at no fault of theirs, how far do we go? And I, my feeling is we exhaust all avenues possible for collection to the point that is feasible, and then we rely on a recommendation, again, coming back from you guys that you've done for other municipalities and government entities that talk about a request for a payment.
Okay, so.
How is that different?
No, that, that's understandable, and I know what you're saying. If, you know, you've offered X amount of funds per family.
$1,000 per occupied unit. Up to $1,000.
Are they eligible, unfortunately, to vicious circles? Can they use those funds to perhaps pay off their current taxes that are in the 50s? And move their trailer? Or is that just for relocation?
So, so the $1,000 that we approved, per, and that's not per person, that's per occupied unit.
Correct.
That $1,000 that we approved was in order to assist, along with other funds that are available out there, that was in order to assist with relocation.
Own.
Own.
Okay.
And, and that's what we approved.
Right.
Not to say that we don't need to talk about that some more, but for me, Renee, it's two separate issues. I mean, you're, you're doing exactly what a great treasurer does, and we're lucky to have you, in, in thinking about, okay, we've got these taxes outstanding, we sure can't let any of the trailers leave while we've got taxes outstanding on them. I get that. That's not my concern right now. My concern is we've got residents living out there that have water that's unusable, right? See Flint, Michigan, if you want to know if that's a big deal. I want to, I want to make, and, and these are people who are living in a, in a place of last resort. It's not like you're living out there if you've got anywhere else to go. I want to do everything we can to assist those people with moving on. And to me, that's separate from what happened with trailers. Trailers can't leave until we figure out what's going on with taxes, but we can sure as heck get the people out of there. So I would be opposed to utilizing any of those dollars to take care of the back taxes. that we try to keep the taxpayers of Story County as whole as possible, and if that means putting a lien on the property, whatever that means, we're gonna count on Ethan to unwind that, but I don't want getting these people moved to be wound up at all in what's going on with those, in what's owed on those trailers. So hopefully that helps you with answering some of those questions.
It does, it does. Um, just another question that came to mind, after, or if we get down to fourteen trailers plus the house, are, is, is there any way as accounting we can monitor the situation to make sure he's not...
Well, so that falls to the Board of Health.
Okay.
And, and Margaret and the Board of Health, and, and I was, Paul was the chair of the Board of Health, so he was involved in this, you know, intimately all the way through. But, but assuming it gets down to fourteen trailers, that does not alleviate the responsibility for the water to be in good shape and be monitored. It just means that instead of DNR being responsible, the county becomes responsible. Margaret, if I'm misstating any of this...
You have a right.
Then the county becomes responsible, and I'll tell you this, and I believe that I'm gonna be the, the member now serving on the Board of Health, uh, in, in lieu of, of having another supervisor on board, uh, I'm gonna be opposed to having anybody living somewhere, be it fourteen or thirty or however many, um, where the water is not, is not sufficient. Uh, so I don't think, just get it, I don't think that magic number of getting down to fourteen automatically means that everything goes away. It just means that it falls to the county Board of Health rather than state DNR, um, and we're gonna have to see what happens. My first priority is make sure that, um, those that have, I think eviction notices have been served to get down to the fourteen, but those that have the eviction notices, and frankly, anybody else, the ones that haven't gotten the eviction notices who wanna move on, I wanna assist them however we can, up to the limits we've put on it, to go ahead and move on.
If there is a need for more financial assistance, is the board willing to extend that amount?
Uh, I don't think we can, I, I don't feel comfortable answering that question, right, at this point, because we don't have all the...
So what we've done to this point, right, what we've done to this point is, we have freed up Carla and her staff in community services, uh, to not have to jump through all the hoops that they normally have to jump through to offer assistance. The thousand dollars in my mind is not a limit, it's an addition. So, in addition to the thousand dollars that Story County is putting out there, they also have access to dollars in, in many other areas that we've now cleaned up the red tape that maybe they can access a little more simply, and for sure, the thousand dollars, they can access as simply as possible, uh, just, just to try to get them moved on into, uh, into more su- suitable living arrangements.
You can use that one if you want to.
I'll assist, um, I'll get it.
You might be able to close to sort of get it set up.
The, the thousand, uh, there are other community agencies that people may be able to access, um, which would be in addition to the, the thousand that we would be looking to.
And your staff is gonna facilitate some of those contacts.
Correct, yeah. And, um, we've got information on all of those agencies available, as well as, um, Sierra has a deposit assistance program that we will provide information to folks for, and in cities also has deposit and personal training programs, so, yeah, we've got all that information.
Yes, so we're gonna, Renee, we're gonna try to access all of those dollars we can, plus the thousand. I don't see, uh, I don't see Story County as having the ability to go beyond that thousand per, uh, per unit that, that we have out there. That said, I also don't expect that those are the last dollars that Story County's gonna spend, because we're gonna have some additional responsibilities, it's just not gonna be in the relocation process.
Good questions, other, other questions?
I think that's it.
Does that do it?
Yeah, that's all for tonight.
All right, yeah, you?
So, I guess my other question is, this is mostly for the residents, that shows there's no need for either of us to be present at, from your standpoint.
I don't believe so. I'm, I'm going to tell them, you know, those that do own their trailer, how to proceed to get it out there, if that's what they choose to do. Um, I believe, I told Deborah Schindler, I think there's one or two veterans, so Brett could probably have additional assistance for them.
Thank you so much for your assistance in this.
I hope you're feeling better. Thanks.
Thanks.
Yep. Uh, discussion consideration of Cigna Group Insurance Renewal for Life Accident Disability Benefits. Alicia Whitnall.
Good morning.
Hi there.
This is our last piece of, um, of our renewals for upcoming disability benefits for our employees. Um, Cigna Life Insurance is our carrier, and we have, um, short-term, long-term disability, and also our life insurance. About three years ago, we switched over to Cigna from Dearborn Life. Um, at that point, we were looking at, um, we had significant premium savings between Dearborn Life Insurance and Cigna. Um, I got the renewal back for our, um, our benefits and also requested an enhanced self-insure quote for the short-term disability piece, uh, those benefits. So that's what you see in front of you. Our renewals, they did not increase any of our premiums, um, they haven't increased any of those premiums in terms of the benefits Cigna, um, so that, that's a great benefit for our employees. Um, the other piece is the self-insuring quote. Um, we, we do have a reasonable quote, it's a dollar fifty-eight per employee per month to, um, pay for the, um, self-insurance piece. This is what have them, they, they would still do, um, all the reporting done, they, they would make the determination as far as the benefits are approved, they do all the taxes reported, they have the checks for the disability.
We'd just be funding it all.
They would just be funding it, although there are, you know, oversight and effort as far as seeing what the claims are and, and doing different things, but, but they would still make that determination as far as whether that employee would fall back for short-term disability. The benefits are all the same, um, so the employees, nothing's changed on the benefits, and I'm not getting any of this, um, insurance for them. Looking, I, I did go back about five and a half years and kind of did an analysis on what we, what we paid in premiums versus claims, um, in about five and a half year period, the difference between claims and, um, premiums was almost ninety thousand dollars. Now, take in mind, we will still have to pay the four hundred dollars per month for our employees to be able to have a self, to be self-insured.
So we paid five thousand in order to get ninety thousand back from the premium?
So, so overall, um, it, it makes sense to provision this piece. I also took a look at, um, what our current employee base has as far as that we, short-term coverage thirteen weeks. Um, so if I look at, look at Cigna, it's over fifty percent of our employee population has more than thirteen weeks of Cigna coverage. So, the risk is that, that they're, um, you, you will, you may have a year, um, I think this year fifteen was our largest year for claims, but if you look at it in overall, five years, we have spent a lot of insurance fees.
And we've got enough in reserve to be able to cover it?
We, we have that, and then what we'll do is, well, to, to keep that reserve is we still figure out the premiums for employee and, and, and charge that. It, it's a hundred percent of credit provided, it was just a financial piece that we do in order to, to have that money over in short-term.
Question, Wayne?
No.
Okay.
I appreciate you getting a look at the information, uh, today, uh, and, uh, going through that, so... So, what we have is the, uh, consideration of approval of the Cigna Group Insurance Renewal for Life Accident Disability Benefit, uh, which involves self-insuring, self...
Second, further discussion. Clinton?
Aye.
Sanders, aye, passes. Thanks, Alicia. Uh, next item is discussion consideration of the recommendation to merge case management services with Boone County. Deb, Carla, and Erin?
Three musketeers. One in one.
Good morning, Cory.
Good morning. Afternoon.
All right, so this is an update, um, from a meeting that we had with you a couple of weeks ago, um, case, potential case manager with Boone County. At that meeting, the board directed staff to proceed with conversing with Boone County to see what this structure might look like and how best to proceed. Um, we have since found out that, one, rather than two, of the managed care organizations were contracting with, um, existing case management units, um, and we would need to go under one Medicaid number and use that particular rate associated with that Medicaid number in order to build for services. And what would make sense in this scenario would be that we use Boone County's Medicaid number and their rate and surrender the Story County number and rate. We also looked at, um, based on those financials, we determined that with the current number of case management clients, we would need to have four case managers through Story County clients. We know Lisa Markle and Alyssa to address the personnel expenses of the four staff, and by using the Boone County reimbursement rate, which is eighty-seven dollars and forty-nine cents per fifteen minutes unit, um, this would meet our expenses and then some. Though we probably would need to purchase supervision coverage, uh, through the Boone County staff, um, but Boone County said that would be, be worked out through the twenty-e agreement and the governing board for that particular agreement. We also met with Ethan, Alyssa, and Boone County rep to review risk, are we gonna have individual risk or shared risk in this agreement, and then what would the membership of that twenty-e board look like? So the next step would be to draft a twenty-e agreement, and Ethan could start working on that on behalf of the counties. Uh, but we would like to address, uh, the first, the potential merger with existing case management staff to, to gauge what the interest is in moving in this direction, would we have enough staff, um, to pursue it, and I would like Carla and Erin to, uh, talk a little bit about that, so we know what our next step would be.
We have arranged in a meeting later this week to meet with the current staff to, to find out from them, are they interested in continuing to work for Story County in this capacity? Um, we do believe there are some folks that are looking at some other employment opportunities, so we just kinda see, wanna see where they're at with all of this. The structure would look different than how, how our program is currently operated, and so that, that would maybe change or something as well. I don't have anything to add.
Yeah, so, so for me, and you guys just help me if, if I'm missing something here. So, I've been really interested in this conversation, and, and it made a lot of sense to me, uh, because of Boone's model of char, as I understand it, charging more and then returning some dollars at the end of the year. It made some sense to me if it meant, uh, that we could maintain some of our existing staff. But there is a risk there. There's a risk that the numbers aren't gonna equal out, that, I mean, Deb, we've seen that firsthand, where, you know, we, we've tried to have things be a wash and, and it never quite works out like you want it to. And so for me, uh, that line of being interested only applies up to keeping our existing staff if it means creating this and then having to go hire new staff. I stopped being interested real, real quickly, because I think we're putting Story County on the hook for something that we need not put on the hook, because as I understand it, uh, these managed care organizations are gonna be responsible for providing services to the people of Story County, whether it comes through our staff or Boone staff or however they do it. Um, so I don't see the advantage if our existing staff is not interested in continuing with their current jobs, albeit in a little different structure. Am I seeing that right, or am I missing something?
I, I think you are, and I believe that was part of the conversation I had with Carla yesterday, uh, and what role the regions basically would play, uh, in, in this scenario, in the event that, uh, you know, because the whole change in case managers was not something that we orchestrated or desired, but this was passed down to us by the state and so forth, and yet the regions are the ones that's gonna, uh, play a key role, but I agree with you in terms of our own staffing and whether or not there's going to, uh, would there be other duties, uh, that some would be able to, uh, uh, assume that may not be necessarily in the case management, but the concern is, again, their location. It, it would appear on the surface that, uh, the clients in Story County is still gonna need to be served by our personnel. And while the oversight or is primarily now gonna be in Boone County, uh, I, I was not, uh, excited about the fact that our staff then would have to be going to Boone every day, you know, in order to deal with Story County clients, and Carla kinda assured me from her understanding, that more than likely would not be the basic case, but you're saying that if some of them take other jobs and go do other things, how do we fill those spots? Uh, my question is...
My, my stance is, let's let Boone worry about filling those spots, and if we wanna have a conversation with Boone about the possibility of using some of our facilities to provide services, that's an entirely different conversation as I see it, but what I'm gonna suggest, Wayne, is we don't have, based on what you're telling me, we don't have enough information to make a decision right now. I would ask that you guys go meet with staff and see, get a gauge of where we are, so that we can have this full conversation before we make a final decision. Does that make sense?
Yes.
And I don't think that requires any action from us, we, we're just putting it back on you guys to figure out what it looks like. I'm gonna be really, really hesitant for us to enter into something like this if you're not talking about us taking the people that we already know and, and have, and have them providing services. If it's gonna be Boone's responsibility, let it be Boone's responsibility if we don't have that staff. It, is where I think I am right now.
So, uh, would you anticipate after your meeting within a reasonable, uh, a week or two, that this will come back for us, because wasn't there some discussion with the other, another county within the region, uh, with us, uh, asking whether or not they were going to, uh, join, uh, 'cause this is part of the, this is still part of the twenty-e agreement, is it not, or?
It would be a new twenty-e.
Yeah, new twenty-e. And so there's still questions from what I understand and what supervisors have been saying, that we wanna make sure we have a good handle on before we actually sign that agreement.
Right, right. And I, and I would anticipate, just because of the timeline, um, that we need that next Tuesday, with the recommendation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, next item is discussion consideration of Resolution sixteen sixty-one residential subdivision located at fifty-three, three seventy-two Hundred Eightieth Street. And very, thanks for sitting through all this.
Thank you. And then, done with making official announcements?
Yes, I sure can. Uh, I'd like to introduce you to Amelia Shoneman, she's our new planning intern. Amelia, why don't you stand up real quick?
Hi, everyone.
We're very happy to have her, and, uh, she started yesterday, and we put her to work, and she's doing an awesome job. Welcome. Okay, this is our residential parcel subdivision, case zero-three slash sixteen. The name of the proposed subdivision is Cardinal Creek, it's located at five-three-three-seven-two-hundred-eightieth Street. The property owners are Mark, Michael R. Byrd and Patricia J. Trumby Byrd, uh, again, at the same address, Gilbert Island. They're being represented by Victoria Fieldmeyer, Nymaster Good, Law Office in Ames. This is probably the most important, uh, slide that I've got for you today, it gives you a snapshot of what's going on in this particular area. Um, we're gonna try to give you the background of what's going on in this particular area, what our, uh, current Story County development regulations require for residential subdivisions. It's also in the aim for the trench plans, we're gonna give you some information about there, give you all the facts to help you with your decisions. Uh, so, again, this is located between the cities of Gilbert, it's about a half a mile southeast of Gilbert, it's about a three-quarters of a mile... She's doing an awesome job. Okay, this is our residential parcel subdivision, case 03/16. The name of the proposed subdivision is Cardinal Creek. It's located at 53372-180th Street. The property owners are Michael R. Byrd and Patricia J. Trumbyrd. Again, at the same address, Gilbert Island. They're being represented by Victoria Fieldmeyer, Nightmaster Good, Law Office in Ames. This is probably the most important slide that I've got for you today. It gives you a snapshot of what's going on in this particular area. We're going to try to give you the background of what's going on in this particular area, what our current Story County development regulations require for residential subdivisions. It's also in the Ames Urban Fringe Plan, so we're going to give you some information about there, give you all the facts to help you with your decisions. So, again, this is located between the cities of Gilbert, it's about a half a mile southeast of Gilbert, it's about three-quarters of a mile northeast of the city of Ames. As I mentioned, it's in the Ames Urban Fringe Plan, we'll go into that in a little more detail. Subject property is outlined for you. It's a little over thirty-eight acres. The red dots represent existing dwellings, existing parcels. There's about nine of those, and then three-quarters of a mile of what we're calling the subject property. The yellow dots represent parcels where the county could, if the property owner requested a zoning permit for a new dwelling to locate on those properties. So there's six of those total, potentially, there could be fifteen houses within this three-quarters of a mile area. Proximity-wise, to the north, we've got a thirty-nine acre parcel. To the east, it's a twenty-nine acre parcel, which is a part of an allot, to Spruce Ridge, which, that was part of a residential parcel subdivision, it was before the board supervisors, and we'll go into some detail on that. That was in 2014. To the south, there's a forty acre agricultural parcel, and then to the west, a thirty-six acre agricultural parcel. Closer view of the property, again, it's thirty-eight point six-nine acres. There is an existing dwelling located in the south central portion. It was constructed in nineteen ninety-six. There's an accessory structure off to the northeast. The area that encompasses the drive, the house, the green space, to the west, east, north, and south, is about a seven, eight acre area. There's a creek and drainage area that extends or meanders through the northern portion of the north one-third. Much of that area, the north side of the creek, has been grassland for the most part. Property owner has planted all those trees that you see. In the northwest portion, on the west and south side of the house, they acquired the property in about two thousand and three. So the northwest corner is the proposed new lot. They've got a plat-
That's where the arrow is pointing, nope, the meadow grassy area, meaning-
Correct. And the northwest portion of the site's about, going to be about a three-and-a-half acre parcel for a proposed new single-family dwelling for a family member. So the area south of the house consists of about twenty acres of agricultural row crops. That use of that land will continue. So break it down percentage-wise, about twenty-one percent of this parcel consists of the dwelling, the surrounding land, twenty-seven acres on the north side, the grassland, and then about fifty-two percent is agricultural row crops. Again, that use will continue.
But we'd be eating into the twenty-seven percent of-
Uh, the, well, yeah.
Correct.
A little bit of history, July 2, two thousand and two, planning staff did do some property research, and requested a previous property owner to determine whether or not the property could be divided. And it was the land evaluation and site assessment that we did. The numbers came back high, meaning that the soil qualities characteristics were high enough that it really should not be divided for a single-family dwelling. While in May of two thousand and twelve, the land development regulations were amended to allow for some flexibility, to allow rural residential parcel subdivisions such as what's being requested to occur. Intent-wise, you know, we're looking at parcels that have been taken out of agricultural production or agricultural use, but I can tell you, as a practice, there's been some that have occurred on areas where it's been active agricultural use.
So this has nothing to do with the change that we talked about, like the thirty-five acre minimum?
Yeah, well, that was, so back in two thousand and twelve, Wayne, we referred this to our planning staff and Planning and Zoning Commission to take a look at that thirty-five acre minimum. And one of the proposals they came back with was a mechanism to allow just this-
More flexibility, but allow future divisions such as this. So the property to the east, which is just directly east of where the subject property is, there was a case similar to what's being requested today, it was May 6, two thousand and fourteen. It was the Leon Wupker property, and it was a residential parcel subdivision called Spruce Ridge, contained a three-point-eight-one acre parcel with an existing dwelling, and then a new proposed parcel, which is currently vacant today, it was about a one-point-three-eight acre proposed parcel for a new single-family dwelling. Property also is located in the Ames Urban Fringe area, also in the rural service and ag conservation area, and then subcategory of agricultural and farm service. So it's an apples-to-apples comparison. We reviewed the staff recommendation, it did indicate that it was in the Ames Urban Fringe, didn't really go into policy, which I'm going to share some of that information we did this morning. But that one was approved by the board supervisors. We received a resolution from the city of Gilbert at that time, waiving their right to review it, nothing from the city boards. And in talking with staff, we don't think that they sent anything with regard to this. Anyway, because in these rural areas, it's in the 20E agreement that they waived their right in.
Right.
So this shows you the map, it's the land use framework map, Ames Urban Fringe Plan. Subject property is shown where that red dot is. Again, we're in the rural service and agricultural conservation area, subcategory of ag and farm service. So Ames Urban Fringe Plan was adopted in two thousand and six, involves the city of Gilbert, the city of Ames, Story County. It's the vision through twenty thirty, and it addresses the proposed land use in that area, how to deal with proposed development seminals, and then how to deal with amendments that might occur within a two-mile area. The property is also located within the Story County study area, which is identified in this document. It's an area that's between one hundred and eightieth and one hundred and ninetyeth Street. I think there was some initial work done on it, nothing was completed. However, there's a statement in there that says the county and host cities were to retain their jurisdictional powers in this area and maintain a status quo regarding land use, zoning, and subdivision until a joint decision was made for the area.
So what does that bring to mind?
It meant it was a DMZ. It meant that Gilbert wasn't going to extend into there, Ames wasn't going to extend in there, and the county was not going to allow any full-on subdivisions in that area. It just never got codified.
Right. Nothing happened. It's something that still should, in my view, occur. It's in the twenty sixteen-
Well, especially now with us paving, Grant Breton, five thirtieth, whatever you want to call it, this is going to become a major topic of conversation among developers. We better get out ahead of this.
Right. And it's going to be primed too, because the city of Ames is looking at updating their comprehensive plan, and this will likely be a part of that review. So some of the highlights of the actual plan, these are some of the policies, they're not all of the policies. We've selected four, and we're going to talk about two of these highlighted in yellow. The first policy talks about the importance of maintaining farming and agricultural production as a predominant characteristic of the rural service and agricultural conservation area. Four, prevent agricultural, farmstead, and strategically located rural residential development. I think you make the case that this application is similar to that.
Right.
To use well water or other water systems. It's in the rural water area, zine, in compliance with the standards of the Iowa DNR. Breakdown of the ag and farm service policies. Again, what's highlighted is, it says recognizing the ag land as a natural resource of the Ames Urban Fringe that should be protected. Farming and ag production is and will continue to be prominent land use of areas dealing in ag and farm service designation. Again, fifty-two percent of this parcel will be, will stay in agricultural production. Four is an issue, though, initially it was both cited by the cities of Gilbert and the city of Ames. It says, limit non-agricultural residences in agricultural and farm service designation to homes existing at the time of this plan, or remain scattered building sites where farmstead homes once existed, or homes on very large parcels. Again, definitely looking at a thirty-five acre standard, which is likely what that references. It says, otherwise subdivisions for the creation of new residential development lots is not supported within the ag and farm service designation. County zoning, again, outlined for you, subject property, it's surrounded by A-1 agricultural district. This property does have flood plain going throughout. The blue represents the limits of the flood plain. Again, there's a creek that meanders through. So we're primarily looking at the north one-third area for that whole town. This is a plat, again, it would be a two-lot subdivision plat. Lot one, which would be the largest, would contain the existing single-family dwelling, it would be a little over thirty-five acres. The proposed new lot would be three-and-a-half acres, and would contain the proposed single-family home for the family member. We're into the site photos, this is the existing dwelling. We're looking down the cave drive to residents. We're going to be panning to the west, this is the location for the proposed new lot.
Basically, the tree line is the flood plain, is that right?
Uh, part of it. The front of the house, looking back to one hundred and eightyeth Street. You can see some of the trees that have been planted, numerous trees. Looking at the proposed new lot from the road this time, we're looking to the south, we're going to be panning to the southwest. Now we're into the Story County land development regulations. Says the subdivision may be submitted through the year approval as a residential parcel subdivision plat with all of the following true amounts of all of those. There's nine things, I've highlighted some of the important ones. First thing says that development lots created by this subdivision are intended to be used for residential purposes. They are. Only two development lots may be created, that's the case here. The assessment property card for the property shall show a single-family dwelling and/or a farmstead, which there is an existing dwelling. Five, the subdivision lies wholly within the A-1 district, or parcels located within the boundaries of the Ames Urban Fringe Plan must be both zone A-1 agricultural and lie wholly within the rural service and agricultural conservation designation. That's all it says, and it needs-
Does.
With regard to public input, we did send notices to all the landowners within a quarter of a mile of the property, April twenty-sixth. Didn't receive anything in writing, but we did see, receive a verbal comment on the night of May from the adjacent property attorney, Mr. Leon Wupker. As I mentioned, the city of Ames and the city of Gilbert both did provide email responses, stating that they didn't think that it met primarily that policy number four about creating new lots through subdivision. Did have a conversation with the city clerk from Gilbert, and she stated that initially they thought this was going to be a much larger proposed development than was being requested. They did, the city council did, on the second, take action by motion. They did send us a letter with regard to their unanimous support of this project. So in summary, few items to consider to help you with your decision. The semil does meet the county's requirements with regard to the semil requirements. The north third of the property has the meandering creek and flood plain. There's about a four acre, a little larger if you go outside, it expands out to about a seven acre area, with the dwelling, accessory structure, gravel, and grassy area. One residential lot will be created in the northwest area of the property. Some of that grassland will be removed, there's still maybe five to six acres of grassland. South, twenty acres will continue to be farmed. It's important to look at what's going on in this area. We've got nine existing single-family homes within a three-quarter mile area, there's potential to add six more. This would be, we would do this on our own, under the guidelines of the Ames Urban Fringe Plan, we would have that authority issued, unless somebody's going to build a single-family home. These are parcels that have thirty-five acres of grain. So potentially, there could be fifteen, not including this property.
Now, even though the judge chose us to do that for those other properties, one of the interesting parts here is this is for family members. Is there any stipulation on any of the other five or six? I guess like it sounds the precedent that has to be, you know, family members? If the maximum is two, it possibly could fit within the requirements.
What I'm thinking of is parcels that are out there within that three-quarters of a mile-
That meet the-
Thirty-five acres. We would have, we would be required to issue that, because it would meet our minimum requirement.
Got you. Thank you.
And then, again, on the sixth of two thousand and fourteen, board supervisors did look at the Spruce Ridge residential parcel subdivision, did approve that one.
And I would say that's very similar to this one.
It's a good comparison. It's in the Ames Urban Fringe Plan, you know, while there is strong support of preserving agricultural farm ground, it does also talk about rural residential development. We've talked several times about the existing conditions. Again, the city of Gilbert did approve by unanimous motion this project. And as I mentioned, our work program is just something that we're supposed to be working on with the cities of Gilbert, with the city of Ames, in fine-tuning land use in this area. So based on all of those things, planning staff thinks that this is something that can be approved, which would be item one. And without any questions, as I mentioned, the property owners are here to have questions for you.
You know, what comes to mind is that our goal and our stated objective have always talked about preservation of prime ag land. I'm reminded of the fact when I came to Ames in nineteen sixty-six, north of twenty-fourth Street, and further west was mostly all dairy farms. So over a period of time, the growth pattern and the desire for expansion as the population changes causes you to reevaluate it and take a look at. And yet, the idea of zoning is to allow for an orderly type of zoning or development that is consistent, and I think that's what we basically try to do. So I'm always concerned when I hear people basically saying, well, you know, your policy says you can't do anything because you're taking prime ag. And so I think we have to always kind of keep that in mind, that over time, the conditions, the circumstances somewhat adjust, but the fact that the majority of this land is still going to be ag production, we're really talking about a very small segment of land here. And so I guess my comfort level is very good in the process that we kind of have and place out, and the mechanism that we use to determine whether we approve the permit for these types of land.
Well, I think you're dead on. I think this one, by our policy and our past practice, two years ago, past practice, this one is approvable and should be approved, and then we need to have a conversation about what this whole area looks like. So I'll leave it to you if you want to make that motion.
Yeah, I would make approval of Residence 1661, the residential subdivision at fifty-three three seventy-two one hundred and eightyth Street. Ask for-
Yeah, one second. Further discussion?
Aye.
Sanders, aye, passes. Jared, direction for you. We need to get with the city of Gilbert and the city of Ames as soon as possible to talk about this entire area between, in my mind, it's between George Washington Carver and sixty-nine and one hundred and ninetieth Street all the way to the Gilbert city limits, because a lot of factors are playing into it, but Darren Moon's going to get in there and pave that road in a year or so that runs north between George Washington Carver and sixty-nine. And that is, that can be impactful with what happens here, and I think the three entities, us and Ames and Gilbert- And I think the three entities, us and Ames and Gilbert, better have some understanding of how we're going to deal with these things and how it impacts this entire area according to the French plan.
Agreed, eleven clear.
Okay, thanks. Do we need to take, does the board, do we need to have you bring something back to the board in a week or so for us to formally request that we open up that area? Will you look into that and just make a decision?
It's already on the work program.
Okay.
So I mean, if you want to do something in addition to that, you certainly can.
Just think through the right way for us to start and have this conversation, and let's have it sooner rather than later.
Okay.
No other reports, public forum number two, opportunities for members of the public coming on items not on today's agenda. Board may not take any action to the open meeting, although we may do so in the future. Anybody wish to address the board? Seeing no one moving, liaison assignments, committee meeting updates, Wayne?
Just very quickly, I did meet with Carla yesterday, and we pretty much discussed what she shared in her report. And one other discussion is that I did follow her email from John Miller from Waterloo, Black Hawk County regarding the NACO stepping up initiative. And I think I followed to Debbie as well, because that is directly going to be tied to what we do in the jails with mental health issues, jail diversion issues, and things of this nature. And we are trying to look at best practices that other counties are using and also what is best practices in and around the nation. And then we also talked about the trying to determine who will actually take over to lead that program in the jail as of July 1st and working in cooperation with op domain and so forth, so.
Outstanding. Thanks, Wayne. I don't have anything. Announcement supervisor, Wayne.
Pass.
All right. Services for Paul Toohey. Visitation, we Wednesday night from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m. County's not going to take any formal action there. But then Thursday morning, Story County will close to the public from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 Any county employee wishing to attend, service Paul Toohey clearly may do so. Any employee that does not choose to attend can sure stay behind and work in a quiet situation, but all county facilities will be closed or all county operations will be closed to the public. Austin, I appreciate if you would really get that. I don't want people showing up at the door expecting to be served during that time. At 9:30 a.m. over at the Justice Center, there will be full law enforcement honors, including a 21-gun salute. And I know Wayne and I will go up and say a few words there. And then from there, there will be a procession of law enforcement and anybody who chooses to be part of the procession over to the Catholic Church where the full funeral will begin at 10:30. And then like I said, in Story County will reopen for business at 1:00 p.m. We lost a great, great man. And somebody that Wayne and I both relied on greatly in addition to counting as a great friend. And we all owe it to Paul Toohey to recognize that he spent his entire adult life trying to make Story County a better place. And if each of us come to work every day trying to match that, then we're honoring him in the right way. With that, I take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second, all in fair, say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.